One of them was called.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and start our regular city council meeting for Monday the 17th, 2017. And as all our previous other council meetings, we'll start with the first fifteen minutes of open mic. If you'd like to address the council and have something to say, come on up. All we'd ask is you give your name. And if you don't have a name, we'll assign you one. No, I'm just kidding. So, for the first fifteen minutes, if you'd like to address, and this isn't the same as the people that have written to, written requests to talk to council. We'll do that next. We sort of savor that, so. Okay, I don't see anybody jumping up and running to the microphone, so. We'll just go ahead and call to order the Monday the 17th general, uh, city, regular city council meeting, and could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Trotman.
Here.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Hockes.
Here.
Meisner.
Here.
Councilmembers Gill and Smith are excused. We have a call.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. So, let's go ahead to the.
I will note that councilmember Gill will be calling in for a go-to meeting at a later time.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Let's go to the citizens' request to speak to council. Would you call a first name, please?
We have one written request to speak. It's Gregory Carlson and Colby Ketchmar. They want to speak on behalf of the sister city visit that they are getting ready to take.
Thank you very much. My name is Gregory, my name is Gregory Carlson, and as some of you may know, I'm the president of our Fremont County Canyon City Valdi Sister City Association. And as you know, relations between Russia and the United States are complicated right now. And the mission statement of our association is building French, building world peace, one friendship at a time. And, uh, Colby Ketchmar and I are, in a few days, going to be heading over to Russia for ten days to try to further that mission. We're really looking forward to it. In fact, the mayor of Valdi mailed us this gigantic calendar as a gesture of friendship. And last Christmas, they put in the Valdi newspaper that no amount of politics can ever get in the way of friendship between our two communities. And so even though you might see all the bad stuff on the news, just know that your local Sister City Association is doing a lot to further the friendships. And this right here is our official gift that we're gonna give them to celebrate our twenty-five-year anniversary. That bear weighs about twenty pounds, and it's gonna go in my checked bag, which is gonna be great. And, uh, and, um, it has the seals of both Canyon City and Valdi on it, and it's just, we think they're gonna love it. We hope that they're gonna put it in the Valdi mayor's office, just as a symbol of the friendship between our two communities. And so, we're gonna come back with a report after we get back to let you know how it went. And, um, we're just so excited to go, and we hope you're proud of your local Sister City Association and all the work that we're doing. So, by the way, one of my, just to remember, to not take for granted being an American citizen, one of our friends over there who, who, who last summer was over here, asked me if I could bring back the special brand of hazelnut coffee, because they can't get it over there. So, just remember when you're having your nice sip of morning hazelnut coffee, how great it is to be an American, and how our amazing markets, you can get whatever you want. So, don't ever take it for granted. So, we're really excited to go. I know you have a long agenda, so we won't use any more time. But thank you so much. And, uh, be, follow us on our Facebook page, our Fremont Valdi Facebook page, and we'll have a journal of our visit as well. So, thank you so much.
Gregory, well, first of all, congratulations or thank you for both of you going, and Colby. And when was the last time we sent a contingent to Valdi?
This, uh, is not going to be an official delegation, because right now, that's not possible to do. Um, and so, it's been at least more than three years since we've been able to do an official delegation backwards or forwards. And so, we're hoping that that's gonna change soon, and that will, relations will get better, so that we can send official delegations back and forth again.
Well, good luck. Bring our greetings to the citizens of Valdi.
We will. Thank you so much, everybody.
What day are you leaving, Gregory?
Thursday. So, I better start packing.
Okay. We will have, we have a proclamation by that time? Yeah, we have a proclamation sent with you as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. We'll try to also get this put up in the display we have out there.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other?
That's all we have.
Okay. We will then go for approval of the minutes for the June the 19th regular city council meeting and the July 5th general government meeting. Are there any corrections for those minutes? Mr. Meisner?
I don't know that I have a correction, but in regards to the financial agreement that we made, the last paragraph reads, "Following much discussion, it was the understanding of both parties that the city will reimburse the Williams upon invoices received." I realized we also signed a legal agreement, and that was my concern, that that legal agreement did not read from a standpoint of reimbursement. The legal agreement made reference to the reimbursement, that that would be a process between Dawson Ranch and the city, and not the city and Dawson Ranch. But apparently, the city proceeded to go forward and pay that eighteen thousand.
Comments? Is there, there's no change that in the minutes?
Might as well strike that, 'cause it doesn't apply.
No, it's in the minutes. I don't know how you could strike it. It's been done.
I cannot strike it. It was what was, what's the, was what happened at the meeting.
What happened at the meeting?
So be it.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, then, have a motion.
Dennis, I'll note that typo there on the trails, too.
That's on the agenda.
Is it on the agenda?
Yes. I thought I saw that on the, the agenda. You mean the tails? The tails.
In the minutes?
Uh, yeah.
Which minutes was that in? Can you?
Yeah, I mean, there's just the typo in the minutes from the General Government Committee meeting. And so, so, we, we're gonna name trail, trails and not tails.
I just wanna make sure I get it corrected. So noted. Thanks.
Could be the same.
Okay. Could I have a motion and a second on approval of the minutes?
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Schumacher?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the six nineteen regular city council meeting and the July 5th, 2017 general government meeting as written.
Second. Second, Mr. Weed. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Are there any councilmember announcements at this time? Weed, did you? Nobody else is gonna talk about the Vision Committee. I will.
Cancelled. You do it, Dennis.
Go ahead. Okay, the Vision Committee meeting that is scheduled for this Wednesday has been cancelled.
How come?
They didn't envision as many people being gone.
What?
They didn't envision, envision as many people being gone.
Okay. I just was curious as to why it got cancelled.
That's humor, Jim. That's humor, yeah. You cannot redact that either. So, anyone else? Okay, thank you. So, I'll move the, of the adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Tony, would you review the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mayor and council. Resolution five A is a resolution eighteen dash two seventeen to assign trail names to the newly created hiking and mountain biking trails at the Royal Gorge Park. Five B would extend bid thirty-four seventeen for the completion of stormwater improvements on Field Avenue between Central Avenue and South Street. The improvements include installation of pipe drainage structures, as well as reconstruction of existing infrastructure. These are predominantly stormwater related. To tie into the future proposed sidewalk improvements adjacent to the school, this work is necessary in advance of the Safe Routes to School grant, which will probably commence in August. So, our city engineer is recommending extension of bid thirty-four seventeen to be awarded to Avalanche Excavating of Canyon City in amount of one hundred and one thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-one cents. This would be the west phase, so the total project, both for the west and east, which were completed, would be a hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Five C would appoint members Eric Embry for a term expiring December thirty-first, 2020, Randy Smith as an alternate for a term expiring December thirty-first, 2019, and Robert Wellott an alternate for a term expiring December thirty-first, 2020, to the Board of Adjustments. A five D would appoint our new chief of police Derek Harvey as the director and deputy chief Alan Cooper as his alternate to the Regional Emergency Communications Authority. Five D would ratify the July third list of bills totaling four hundred and one thousand and thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Five F would authorize temporary street closure of College Avenue between twelfth and thirteenth streets on August first, between three-thirty and seven-thirty for the annual national night out program. Five G would, would approve an annual maintenance agreement for the water meter readers to finish line for the amount of seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. Five H would authorize the city administrator to execute an agreement for cost reimbursement with the Federal Bureau Investigation and the assignment of one of our officers to a special southern Colorado violent gang and save streets task force. The grant largely would cover any overtime costs. We'll be responsible for the normal time of that officer. Five, last item would authorize the city administrator to sign a mini grant of fifteen hundred dollars with the Fremont County Interagency Oversight Group, which is largely the Sheriff's Department, Town of Florence, and the city, for items related to the August first National Night Out. And J is the list of bills.
Okay. Any additions or corrections at this time? Mr. Weed?
Oh, Dennis?
I had a comment. When we were talking about trail names, Rex was fairly adamant, or at least coy about having a trail named after him. And, uh, on the list, in the resolution, the list of the trail names, Don't Rex is not on there, but it is still on the map.
It will be removed. Until you officially name that trail, it will be unnamed. And I think that's one of the things you brought up. That trail's gonna extend beyond its current location there, so we suggested that we were to bring this matter back to you when some additional trails are completed this summer, next year, 'cause I know you wanted to potentially recognize some other individuals, so we'll bring that back as kind of phase two.
Yeah. And then, what, what is the difference between the east and west phases of, um, Field Avenue?
If you recall, we had done the east portion earlier this, this year, and this is the, and we were hoping we would have the opportunity to complete the whole project, and this provides you that opportunity on both sides of Fields, so before school starts, preferably.
So, is this going to be, uh?
Combination of sidewalk improvements and stormwater improvements.
Okay.
In that vicinity.
Is there sidewalk on the east side now? Let's just gravel paths. Yeah, is that what we're gonna do on the west side as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. So, we're kinda racing the clock.
How come it costs thirty thousand on the east side and a hundred thousand on the west side?
'Cause the majority of the work on the west side is stormwater related, so much more significant infrastructure.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Mr. Meisner?
It's just a question. It's not a question, but a comment, that, that I had noticed an expenditure for the park lights that I emailed Tony, and Tony's gonna be getting back with me on that. Just information.
Well, I think we should bring it up, because I think it's an important policy issue. This was a project that occurred over the period of two weeks. Lighting improvements at Mountain View for the bathroom and lighting improvements for the skate park. That should have been a bundled, combined contract, subject to bidding. Clearly, it was broken into two parts, and we have an issue with it, and we're gonna be addressing it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Got a motion to second to approve the agenda? Mr. Meisner?
Can I approve the agenda? Uh, we need.
Or adopt it?
We need to remove, I would request that we remove item fourteen.
That's a motion.
I moved it, remove item fourteen. How about I change this? Let me start over. I moved it, we approved the, um, agenda and consent agenda with the removal of item fourteen executive session. Um, the reasoning there would be to wait for the rest, for all of council to be present for the executive session.
Okay. So, we're approving the removal of the executive session number fourteen. Other than that, we are approving the agenda and the consent agenda as it is. Well, then, I guess before we proceed, when we get to item ten, um, I'm going to, uh, at that point, recommend that we discuss this further. There's an enormous amount of changes in that one, and I think that it would probably be prudent to discuss this at a general government committee meeting in detail.
Schedule that. I would agree with you. I agree.
But I think we could have some discussion tonight about some of the things that caught my eye.
Okay.
You wouldn't introduce the ordinance, then? You'd just discuss it as?
We're bringing up a discussion item now as a public hearing ordinance. Ten A and ten B then would be taken off the agenda except for discussion during this meeting.
Ten A would stay, ten A would stay, right? 'Cause we have a public hearing.
Sure.
Sam, remove ten B.
Right. Oh, okay. Got it.
Is that part of my motion? Absolutely. If Dennis wants it.
Frank, you on the second?
Okay. Are there any comments or anything, questions? So, if not, we're gonna go ahead to, uh, roll call vote.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, I think this is why we have such a full audience this evening. So, eight A, or one of the two, I suppose. It's an ordinance number eighteen, series 2017. This is a second reading. Whoops. It is not. Number seven, uh, it's, the new glasses. Number seven, it's an ordinance referring a ballot issue. It's a ten-year extension of Tabor Time Out to Sunset, January first, 2030. Would you read my title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number thirteen, series of 2017, an ordinance referring a ballot issue to the registered electors of the city of Canyon City, providing for a ten-year Tabor Time Out and the reestablishment of the city's district base at the conclusion of such ten-year Tabor Time Out.
Got a motion to second from council? Weed? Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I make the motion to approve ordinance number thirteen, series of 2017 on second reading.
Second.
Second. Any discussions on that motion? If not, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay. Now, we're gonna move on to eight A, which is an ordinance, uh, of number, number eighteen, series 2017. This is a second reading. It is an ordinance adding chapter two point seven eight entitled Royal Gorge Regional Tourism Council. Would you read my title, please?
This is the bill for ordinance number eighteen, series of 2017, an ordinance amending the Canyon City municipal code by the addition of chapter two point seven eight entitled Royal Gorge Regional Tourism Council.
Okay. We would have, apparently have comments from the audience. Would you like to take turns and step to the mic if you have comments from the audience? There is a limit of three minutes. Yes, sir. Mr. Welch. George. Yes, yes, please. Just, let us have your name again, please. Everybody knows you anyway.
I'm George Welsh. I'm superintendent of schools here in Canyon City. Not really speaking in favor or against your action you're, you're gonna be taking. Just wanted to fill you in on some information, because I understand that, that, um, creating such council may lead to a decision to put something on the ballot to help fund that council. And, uh, you guys have probably in the papers and through other communications, school districts put out, heard us talking about possibly having a ballot question or two this fall. Um, we haven't, um, approved such questions yet, but I do have some of our board members here in the room that I think would nod their head with me when we say that we will have a, a ballot question related to a bond election to improve facilities when those plans are done. Um, and we will have a ballot question in relation to a mill levy override for operations that would, um, be dedicated to replacing outdated materials, improving student access to technology, attracting and retaining quality staff members. And, uh, more than anything, just wanted to make sure you knew that we were going to, uh, we intend to have a place on the ballot this fall. And I know that when there are a lot of questions on the ballot in a community, that sometimes it can maybe lessen the chances for, um, the community to get behind them, or confuse some people, and maybe draw out a few extra no questions. So, um, our timeline for making our decision, um, or actually approving ballot language, we're shooting for our May, or, I'm sorry, our August fourteenth meeting to solidify our ballot language. Um, that's well before the deadline, and, and you'll hear much more about what those specific details are. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you had any. But other than that, I, uh, encourage you to consider, um, as you're making decisions to put things on the ballot, to consider what else is happening out there in the community.
Okay. Any questions in council? Okay. Thank you, George. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this ordinance at this time? Evening.
My name is Patty Schwab. I'm here with my husband, Mike Schwab. And, um, we have had careers of thirty-two years with school district Fremont RE1. We've been retired for a long time now, but we are still very committed to what the school district's efforts are. Um, not only as educators, but as members of the community who know that bringing quality involved people to our community means having quality schools. And part of having quality schools is being able to complete the efforts that the school district is trying to do with facility improvements. So, I, along with Superintendent Welch, beg you to please look at the timing for ballot initiatives, um, because we all know that those are very difficult in Fremont County. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Anyone else? Mr. Caverman?
Good evening. My name's Steve Caverman. Um, I'm here this evening in, I guess, kind of two capacities. One, as the chairman of the Fremont County Tourism Council, just to call your attention to the memo from the Tourism Council to City Council, which was part of your packet for tonight's meeting, uh, making a recommendation that, uh, second reading, or that, that this initiative, um, to form a new regional tourism council be suspended until 2018, at which time, we recommend that it be pursued along many of the same courses that it's going now, but, um, just with a, a little more time to consider some of the ramifications and make certain that we get something as important as this, um, done correctly, um, in all respects. And there's a lot of considerations which are kind of listed in the letter that we sent to council, and I, I won't go through those again. Um, and I've also had some questions from a few of the council members I visited with, um, speaking, uh, also as an applicant for the Royal Gorge Regional Tourism Council. And it's the two, the two kind of seem a little dichotomous. How can, you know, we oppose one thing and then ask to support it on the other? And, and I think really that, for me, is just evidence of my commitment personally and professionally, um, to see this initiative succeed. If it does go forward, um, approved tonight on second reading and approved by voters, uh, I'd very much like to be part of that council and, and seeing, um, the council move forward with tourism investments of revenue through the new tax and things like that. So, um, very much like to do, do that, but at the same time, uh, would prefer, uh, speaking personally and in my capacity as the chairman for the Tourism Council, to just see us take this at a little slower pace. Um, it, uh, it moved along unexpectedly quickly, I think, for, um, for many people that have been involved and been asked to participate. And I, I just encourage you to kind of consider the points that we, um, pointed, that we made in our letter, and, um, and vote then with your conscience to proceed, or, or, or just kind of slow this down and hold it up until 2018. Thank you.
Hey, Steve, I had a copy, I had a question or two, uh, on your letter. And there, in there, you, you made a comment about our thinking on the benefits of a delay. And, uh, the first one was that county local marketing district has the potential to generate enough revenue that city wouldn't have to do matching funds. Um, I didn't get that.
Okay, so, um, when we looked at the amount of money that was currently coming to the tourism fund from the city and the county at two percent, the, the split between that collected from the city and that collected from the county was roughly equal, was very close. And, and we anticipate, because of some new properties and the identification of at least one, uh, lodging property in the county that was not paying lodging tax, that those two are gonna come within virtually a dead even split. Uh, that is fifty percent coming from the county and fifty percent coming from the city. So, what I intended to convey there, Dennis, was that, uh, if this were, if this were a tax of, say, five percent, the same's being proposed now by the city, but it was in a wider district including, um, other portions of the county, perhaps the entire county, that the revenue raised could be considerable in itself without any match of general fund revenue, either from the city or from the county, which is what's been proposed, to get us to a six-hundred thousand dollar budget or seven-hundred thousand dollar budget. Um, I think we can get there without that match, without having to commit those general fund dollars every year, year after year, without really knowing what the economy's gonna do year to year. Um, and, you know, if there is a match coming forward then from the city or the county at some point in the future, that's great. I think that's, that's appropriate. Um, I think it's innovative, and it does help to answer some of the concern that hoteliers have had, that they are shouldering the burden of funding this fund, otherwise a hundred percent, with really no participation from any other taxpayers or any other businesses in the community. Does that answer your question?
Um, sort of. It'll be a conversation for another time, but, uh, it's not entirely clear that, uh, it would be very straightforward to get a five percent lodging tax in the county. We'll, we'll just leave it at that for the.
Well, yeah, I, it's not, it's not straightforward that there's gonna be a five percent lodging tax in the city either. I, I think that the considerations of getting it approved is a separate issue.
Oh, yeah. No, no, it's, uh, legally to set it up, it's much different in the city than it is in corporate, including the county in the process.
That's true. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Rourke?
This is a point of information. The linchpin to this whole discussion in partnership on the part of the lodging community and the rest of the tourism industry is the matching piece, because the lodging industry rightfully argues they should not bear the full cost of promoting and marketing this region. That should be a shared expense with other beneficiaries of tourism, whether it be grocery stores, gas stations, restaurants, rafting companies. They have a very fundamentally sound equitable argument. And they do not accept any kind of a tax increase without a matching corresponding amount, whether it be the city or the county. We tried to work that out with the county. They want to pass it this time. That's their prerogative. They want to jump in. Uh, certain of those discussions are still open, but that is, the linchpin of this whole partnership is the necessity to match whatever is generated by lodging tax, which right now is being proposed at five percent. That's the highest proposed tax in the state. None of these lodges took that lightly, but they understand the equity of the. None of these lodges took that lightly, but they understand the equity of the city matching that. That's why, and that is the glue that keeps this partnership. So anything short of that isn't going to cut it with the lodging community.
I think that's understood.
Ray?
I got a question for Steve. My question is, you know, based on what you said the last time we were here discussing all this other stuff, the enthusiasm and all that that you had with regards to what was going on and everything else like that, what was the main thing that clicked in your head that said, this shouldn't go through?
I don't know if there's any one issue, Councilmember. We had a special meeting of the entire Fremont County Tourism Council Board. We had one member absent last week for our special meeting. And during that discussion, which went on for about an hour and a half, we looked at a lot of different considerations. We looked at the, well, we looked at a lot of different considerations, which are enumerated here, as support for why we think a delay is prudent at this point.
Okay, but, but all these things that you're talking about, that we'd be prudent to leave it go, should have been in your, in your mind and in your head when you were here saying that you thought everything was doing, looked like a good idea. All of a sudden, you know?
Well, again, as we pointed out in, in the memo that is in your packet tonight, we do not want the recommendation that this be delayed, essentially suspended, and then picked up again in 2018 as non-support. I think there's universal interest in seeing this proceed. I haven't talked to anybody in the community that has said, no, it's a bad idea. Let's not do it at all. The concern of the Tourism Council was it was proceeding perhaps with a little too much haste. I think that was probably a, that was one of the considerations. And collectively, there was a lot of other things. And I'm not, you know, I'm not speaking for myself here. I'm speaking for the Tourism Council as chairman. It's, it's my role to, you know, draft these kind of things and have them reviewed. And this was a collaborative document that everybody on the council had a chance to review following our meeting before we, before we sent it to you. So it really represents the collective thought of the Tourism Council, not just my position. Again, I think my, my interest in serving on the council, if one is created, is evidence of my personal support for tourism in this community and seeing it succeed and wanting to be a part of that process. I'd just like to be a part of the process, you know, I guess, more preferably next year rather than this year.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This isn't necessarily directed at Steve, but in a sense it is, is I'm personally, at least, in the position that I am in regards to the creation of the Tourism Council, in part because of your enthusiastic support at our last meeting. And we keep hearing these comments about the county, but I'm understanding in terms of, from the email that was received from Commissioner McCall, that the county wants us to go ahead and establish the council and get that process squared away. And once they've seen what, once they've seen what we're going to do, then the county's going to make a decision in terms of whether they want to step forward. My recommendation to this group would be that we proceed with the creation of the council, but that we give very serious consideration to delaying the actual ballot issue for the
Anybody else in the audience would like to make a comment? Step up, please.
Good evening. Mike Banderas, I represent the Royal Gorge Bridge and Park. And the Tourism Council has done a great job, you know, the Fremont County Tourism Council. I was on it for 10 or 12 years and, but they just did not have enough to, you know, to work with. It's, you know, I watched the, the lodging tax grow from $88,000 the first year. We collected lodging tax to, well, with grants and lodging tax this last year, I think it was in the neighborhood of $200,000. So they, they've been effective. Things have been growing, but they just haven't had enough. I pulled up some research today, the Longwood International, I don't know if any of you have looked at it, but last year was a record-breaking year for the state of Colorado. 82.4 million visitors to the state and spending $19.7 billion, billion dollars. You know, it's an all-time high. And there wasn't, I haven't seen a breakout on this region in a, in a few years, but the last breakout I saw, you know, we, you know, the Royal Gorge Region got about 2 million of 82.4 million. And it's, that's probably grown. It's probably up to, you know, closer to 3 million now because the state has grown. But we, we're lacking. We, we need to attract more of that 82.4 million. And that sort of breaks down 37.7 million are from out of state, and 44.7 millions are day, day trippers, people within the state, you know, taking their vacation and holiday within the state. But we just need to attract more. You know, our tourism product here is good. You know, you know, good, good reviews on our tourism product, but, you know, it's simply awareness. Our awareness is not good. We, we need to spend a little more money in destination marketing, and this marketing district will accomplish that. You know, the marketing, a major marketing campaign in that, you know, 600,000 or 700,000 range would, would take us to the next step. It probably needs to be on up there in the 900,000 to a million before we really get competitive with other markets of our size. But, but, you know, the Royal Gorge Bridge and Park ownership and management, we, we support, you know, moving, you know, and moving this year and moving rapidly and getting it on the ballot.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rich Millard, representing the Royal Gorge Route Railroad. And I was asked by the owners, Mark Rexha and the Ashbees, to come down and to piggyback on the Royal Gorge Bridge, lend our support for the formation of this district and putting it on the ballot and pushing forward as, as soon as we can. So that is the position of the ownership of the Royal Gorge Route Railroad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The gentleman here, would you just stand up and walk to the microphone?
My name is Anis. I'm the general manager, owner of the Best Western in Canyon City. I'm just surprised that after so many months of pursuing this proposal, there is a complete U-turn on the committee who proposed this tax. And now the reasons given are absurd. Other thing is, as far as I know, correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, the city attorney made it sure that the county lodging tax cannot go more than 2%. Is that right? The county lodging tax cannot go more than 2%.
Under the current state statute?
Yes.
True. But if they were to create a local marketing district, as we're proposing, it could be higher, depending on whether the voters supported that.
Yeah, but the county, as far as, I was on the lodging tax board in the Prowess County for six years. One thing was for sure, that if an entity proposes a lodging tax, the same entity cannot propose the marketing tax. So if there is a lodging tax in the county, 2%, county cannot bring in any marketing tax or anything. The only option is, is for city to impose the marketing tax. And other thing is, this current tourism panel, there are seven members. And the new, out of seven members, I don't think there is any representation for any hoteliers on that committee. We have been told that, oh, we don't participate. I personally tried to go to the meeting. Why wouldn't I? I was lodging tax director in Prowess County, southeast Colorado. Is there a tourism there? I'll be surprised. But I was there, so I know it's, it's, it's our tax money from our business. I was interested in it. But we went there, I realized, there's no money. Whatever is there is already spent. It's spent in the contracts. Even in last meeting, we had, they were worried that if the new, if the new council does not approve those contracts that were signed for years to come, how can they spend money which they did not have? There is no budget. I don't think there's any budget left for 2018 out of 200,000 or 225,000. So the way the current tourism council is operating, we are not happy. We, we want to see that if $1 comes as a tax from my business, which cuts into my $1 of income straight away, I want to make sure that $1 becomes $10 to bring the more revenue for this area. And we want to promote tourism. Honestly, do I want this tax? I don't want this tax. I don't want 2%, I don't want 5%. But at the end of the day, we know if it is proposed in the ballot, it will pass. It's a citizen. If, if, if something named Tourism Tax passes in Prowess County, southeast Colorado, I'm sure something named Tourism Tax that can be paid by the outsiders will easily pass in this area.
Okay.
So we want to be part of this thing, and we want to see this move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello. Should I just talk to one or stand in the middle?
Whichever makes you most comfortable.
Either way, thank you. My name is Kristen Economy, and I am the current treasurer for the Fremont County Tourism Council. And since we've been working with Vista Works over five years, about seven years, I know numbers have been thrown around a little bit before, but our revenues have increased over 50% in the past seven years. And some of that might be due to increases in rates, but I think a lot of that is due to the success in marketing. I want to talk to, about some of the numbers in regard to budget and treasury. There is no 2018 budget set yet. We approved that in the first meet, or the first, our meeting in December. So there is nothing that's been approved for 2018. We do have contracts. I want to clarify a little bit that we have kind of an ongoing contract with Vista Works, who is our kind of digital marketing, who we contract with for all the digital marketing that you see on the internet, like Google AdWords and Facebook sponsored ads. We also contract with CAC, Colorado Activities Center, to put together our Visitors Guide magazine that you see that's published every year. And we also contract with Certified Folder to help distribute these magazines. And at the meeting, we discussed that if we put together a magazine, we need to pay money to distribute it. And those are the, a couple of the contracts that we're just talking about, that nobody's going to want to put an ad in the magazine for next year if we can't distribute it. And those contracts together run about $25,000 a year approximately for the distribution aspect. Sorry if that was a lot of numbers, so I just wanted to just talk about that when I heard about that.
Yeah, Chris, I think what we were trying to get to is, that's a good defense for the current happenings that are going on.
Yes, I just want to talk about that, like, we're not just out there willy-nilly. Everybody puts thoughtful consideration into the decisions, that there currently is not a budget for the next year, that all the money hasn't been spent, and that we do spend our money wisely and with consensus.
Let me ask something.
Yes.
Within the last 10 days, what has been the turnaround point with FCTC? Because you've attended meetings, Caverman's been at almost all of the meetings. I see Blaine Heckert, he's been at the meetings. Everybody's been 100% behind this. And now, all of a sudden, you have the meeting last Tuesday, and I'm sorry I wasn't there, I didn't know about it, and we've done a complete 180. And I am, I'm just disappointed.
And it's not a 180.
If there were so many conflicts going on, these conflicts, you're on the school board. You knew that was going on, and you said nothing.
Oh, I, I brought.
You've been a gung ho for this.
I brought this up in February and March, exactly.
So what, what within the last 10 days has caused this?
Okay, so we have not done a 180. I think most of the Tourism Council members, the vast majority, are in support of creating a marketing district. But when we got to talk about it together and exchange ideas, we thought that it might be more appropriate to slow down. And Beth Ketchmar did bring up the, she was the first one to bring up, hey, the school board is going to put together a question for a bonds. And then I said, hey, we're also probably looking at a mill levy override as well. But I did know this, and I brought it up in February and/or March, when we were first putting this together, to the committee members from the Tourism Council, I said, hey, just so you know, we are considering this, that this is part of the picture. So that was just one aspect that we talked about, and that maybe it's best to slow down to continue positive partnerships between the county and the city.
But that was when you were going with the county. When the city discovered that we could go ahead as a home rule city and achieve this this year.
Right.
I have heard nothing negative about this until the letter.
Well, I, again, I only attended one meeting. It was the last meeting a couple of weeks ago. And, and I apologize if that was not conveyed through the committee members, but this is, it's just one issue that we thought maybe it would just be wise to slow down a little bit. And again, the FCT has not done a 180. We, we are enthusiastic. We are excited that the city is interested in promoting tourism and providing a match. We think it's great. I think, again, just the exchange of ideas when we finally sat down all together, because the Tourism Council hasn't had, or hasn't spent a lot of time talking about it as a whole, entire Tourism Council since the last couple of meetings. The city had moved pretty quickly with this, I think, so, yes. And yes, I, it's kind of a conflict in a way for me, because I want this ballot measure to be successful. I want the school board's ballot measures to be successful as well. And I think as a community, we all do. We all want to support all of these. We are enthusiastic, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Next. Yes, ma'am?
I am the owner of the Best Western Hotel in Canyon City. I just want to let you guys know, it would be nice to have this on the ballot this year. I don't see why different items should have any impact on other voters. I'm sure they're educated enough to vote for every line item that's on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Ketchmar?
Hi, I am Beth Ketchmar. I, I've been sitting on the Fremont County Tourism Council for over 10 years, and as, as a representative of the city of Canyon City. That's why I originally petitioned to be, I showed my intent to be on the tourism board, was to represent downtown Canyon City and Canyon City in general. But I'm also speaking as a parent, because I have to disagree from longstanding experience with ballot issues, tax ballot issues, when this came up, that it was going to be up against the school issues, and the schools are very much in needs of funds. You know, schools are extremely valuable asset to a community. And people come to a community, yes, because of amenities and because, but, but by having good schools and putting money into our schools, we can attract the kind of young people that we want, that want to come down here and go mountain biking and go kayaking, but also want to bring their families down here and raise their families, because it's an incredible community to raise a family. That's why we chose to come down here 12 years ago, was to raise our kids and go to school here and raise them in the schools here. And they've been extremely successful doing that. But I think when, when we look at that, we could put this issue into 2018, have a more thoughtful, well-considered issue. It could still be part of the city. It could be a city-county issue. The chances of getting it passed are much better. And if we didn't have to compete against the school issues, I think that would be a wise decision on the part of ourselves as a community to support our schools, because they've been trying to go forth with issues the last quite a few ballots. And every time, there's been additional tax issues, and the schools have lost out in deference to the other tax issues. So that's, that's the main reason that I feel that this would be well, it would be well-deserved to be put into 2018, when we could have it, and it would still be a successful issue. We could still go forward. We could still go forward and have more money to go towards tourism.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, is Mark, Kathy, is Mark going to be talking? Mark Gill is going to be talking from a faraway place.
He's one of the ones with vision that won't be here Wednesday.
He better not tell me it's beach, I'm ruling him right now. What?
Poolside.
Beach, he's at the beach.
Beach.
Yeah, he's a beach.
He needs to identify his name and his location.
Yeah.
And what he's drinking.
I don't know.
What's in his hand?
It's on Facebook, Jim. Been following him all week.
Okay. How are we doing? Can't find him?
Okay.
While we're waiting, can I?
Sure, go ahead. You're a councilman, go ahead. Talk. Okay. Mark, are you there?
I am here.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. I'm suffering because I'm not on a beach. Why?
I'm sorry?
I was, you're not going to tell us you're at a beach somewhere, are you?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move right along. You had some comments that you would like to go ahead and talk about regarding the ordinance number 18, that is, we're on the second reading for the Royal Gorge Regional Tourism Council. Is that what you'd like to talk about right now?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
Basically, the Royal Gorge reason is something that I feel we really need to do, because it's going to give a lot more money for marketing for both Canyon City and Fremont County. I believe that it's a good thing. If everybody in, with their separate issues, if everybody markets it as such, I don't really feel in my heart that there's going to be an issue with the three tax issues on the ballot.
That it?
I'm sorry?
Are you done? Did you just get cut off or what? Are you done?
I am done.
Okay. All right. Let's go ahead and have anybody else in the audience that'll do that? Yes, ma'am. Would you come forward and address us? Okay. This will be the last one, then.
Hi, I'm Irimina Solak. I'm manager and owner of the independent small business Park View Inn in Canyon City. And I'm representing all small independent businesses, small motels in Canyon City. And we, I'm like representing all the businesses, I'd like to say, do not delay the ballot and just do this year. This is the voice of the all small business in Canyon City. Actually, for the lodging businesses, which for us, the 5% lodging tax, it's a really, really bad things for the income, for the business, and for the tourism, for our customers. This is what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We need to go ahead and move to a motion, council. At that point, after the motion, then the second, we will ask for discussion from council.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
I make a motion that we pass ordinance number 18, series of 27, upon second reading.
Mr. Meisner, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Let's have a discussion. Who would I start? Scott?
Clarification, Ms. Solak. Sorry. Did I hear that you are in favor of passing it as a small lodge? Is that what I heard? Yes? That you're in favor of moving forward with that? Not in agreement? Okay. Thank you.
Members?
I have a question.
Meisner?
Well, first of all, I want to make a statement. Everybody's talking about taxes, and I recognize that, but the issue on the table tonight is not the ballot issue with taxes. The issue on the table tonight is the creation of the council. So, we need to keep that in perspective. Second of all, the terms are limited to one year for the election of the officers. Would it make sense for those to be two years?
They're two and three-year terms.
Terms are staggered, so you're at a...
I think they go from one to three years, if I'm not correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Three for three years, three for two years, and three for one year.
Okay.
It says the officers on a calendar year, such as the president, and that, that's what he's talking about, is the officers, once they get...
Elected, the council... The chairperson of the council will be elected by the council, and that will be an annual election.
Kind of like it is with planning and everything else.
Yeah.
That makes perfect sense.
Yes, yeah. It's consistent with what we do, yeah. Okay. If you're good, you generally get reelected. If you're not, you don't. So, I'm not going to get reelected. Okay, if that makes sense for by just one year, and I realize with the rotating terms, but it just seems like sometimes with this, a one-year tenure, it's a challenge sometimes to accomplish things and to keep things moving forward when you're turning over every year. And you may not turn over. We looked at, there's six other local marketing districts in the state, and in general, their chairpeople get reelected every year, because they're doing a good job. All right.
Mr. Meisner, clarification. Tonight, we are, it's the formation, not necessarily putting this to ballot.
It's the formation of the council, which is under the authority of the council. And keep in mind, as I understand it, the county has, does not have the authority to create their council, or that has to be done by an election. Is that not correct?
No.
I mean, the county currently has the Fremont County Tourism Council. That's an independent entity, the county. If they want to continue that body, they can. They'll still theoretically be collecting about $100,000 a year. The council that you're about to form will oversee, subject to a ballot measure and a positive election, a budget of $600,000.
Yeah. And Scott, the tax issue will be on the ballot at our next council, I mean, on the agenda, our next meeting.
We will discuss it on another date. We are not making that decision tonight. We are simply empowering these people to start work.
Yes.
That's all we're doing.
Yes.
And the concept that everybody's been working on for months. I mean, we've been working on this whole concept, including the Tourism Council, including some of the commissioner's input. And this whole concept was created through the budget process last year by the Tourism Council. They're the ones that suggested this concept be created.
Correct.
And it eventually wound up being that it was easier for the city to do it versus the county, and that's how it wound up in our lap. We're not trying to suggest that the current Tourism Council is not doing a good job. It's obvious that they have. This is just taking it to the next level. If I recall the verbiage from those budget meetings, that's what they wanted to do, is they wanted to take the Tourism Council to the next level, and that's what we're trying to do.
Right.
Thank you.
And so, a couple of things here. Again, I'll reiterate, this is appointing a council, not the tax issue yet. And then, Mr. Bandera pointed out some really telling statistics. Currently, Canyon City gets 2% of the tourism market, 2.5%, I guess, somewhere in that ballpark. And it's a budget-related issue. And, I mean, I'm in the tourism business, and Mike's in the tourism business, and Rich is in the tourism business, and you got to spend money. That's the way you get people to come here. They don't just find us. You got to spend money. And currently, I agree, I think FCTC's doing a good job, they just don't have the resources to make this happen. But anyhow, we're talking about going ahead with the, appointing the council, and I'm in favor of that.
And just real quick, Canyon City itself, whether we like it or not, is in the tourism business. All of Canyon City. It's, it kind of, it drives our economy to a certain extent. So, it's not just individuals, it's the city itself.
Okay. So, let's make it clear. We're going to vote, this will be the second reading, for a group of people to be called a council, which will be on 8B, to appoint the nine members. That's it. The tax issue is another debate or discussion at a later meeting.
Well, I mean, I'm going to point out, I've had conversations with a number of people, and you know, kind of, the general gist of the conversation is, you know, what's the hurry? What's the hurry? The hurry is that it takes a lot of planning to make this happen. And the sooner you get the council together, the sooner you can start that planning process. And, you know, whether it's a planning process for this year, which quite frankly, I think I hope for, or whether it's next year, there's a lot of planning that needs to be done. If you're going to spend a lot of money, you got to be smart on how you spend it.
Well, you're looking at the end product without knowing how the path is to get there. If I was your grandfather, I'd have to admonish you that you don't have a question, you don't have a staff, you don't have a group, you don't have money, you don't have nothing. And we got 2A pass, we started a lot earlier than this. So, there's a whole heck of a lot of stuff that needs to be done here. So, we need to start with that group that would do it. When we did 2A, we had that group back in April, and we had funds, and we had assignments, we had everything else. You don't have that now. You've got a little bicker and bother going on here, which annoys me, quite frankly. So, anyway, let's go ahead and, are we done with discussion? Let's call a roll, please.
Need a motion.
We've already got it.
Motion in a second.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Huckes.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous. Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Sorry, Mark. By unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Get me on my vacation and don't even give me a vote. My goodness.
Or you're standing on for 8B too, so here we go.
8B. It's appoint nine members to the Royal Gorge Regional Tourism Council. We have a discussion, council discussion at this time.
Yeah, my first question would be, or, well, point of discussion is, three of these seats are going to be appointed to tourism, I mean, to lodging, the lodging industry. And I'll ask Anise and Bina, have you spoken among yourselves as a group of business owners who you would like to see on this council? And I mean, me personally, I would like to see big hotel, little hotel, medium, but has there been an internal conversation where you would have a recommendation? We have six people who have submitted letters of interest.
Would you come to the microphone, please? I know it's a long walk, but it'll wear you, eventually will wear you down. You look like you're in good shape, though.
Pages after the...
Big hotels, small hotels, doesn't matter. Everyone is here together. I used to be a small motel owner, and I'm still owning those two small motels, 30 unit, working 24/7. Luckily, for the last five years, we have owned the Best Western. It's one of the big hotel in Canyon City, so you have got applications, you see who is fit for it. You have heard the Tourism, current Tourism Council, you have heard us. We want a fair representation of everyone. We want good people in this committee. It's not that we don't want existing tourism member. We propose that we give one seat to Bridge Company, we give one seat to Train Company. So, you have the application. We want all and everyone to be represented in this new council. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make recommendations, since I know almost all these people. And certainly, this is just my recommendation. As far as for the lodging industry, I would nominate Blaine Heckert of the Quality Inn, Anise Malkin of the Best Western, and Christine Stopka from the Colorado Inn. And if you want me to keep going, I'll do the rest of them, too. The, as far as the tourism industry, I would recommend Mike Bandera, Steve Caverman, and who's this one? And Kristin, oh, wait a minute here. And Kristin Economy. And the other three are self-explanatory, and I'll nominate Brent Hargrave for the Bridge, Rich Miller. Wait a minute. Oh, Don Falsetti, sorry, for the train and myself, for outdoor recreation.
Dennis, can you repeat the first one?
Dennis? Dennis, before you do that again, that was a lot. Let's dial it down and do one. Let's figure out where, let's start with the easy stuff.
We'll start with the lodging.
You want to start with the lodging?
Yeah.
Okay. Or do you want to start with the other ones? Because there's only, like, Mike Bandera. I'm in favor.
Mike Bandera, yes.
In the rich category.
Mike Bandera is under tourist industry, past, present. Is that, I'm seeing X there.
Nope. I'm good.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. Counsel, I would also like to nominate Dennis.
Mr. Weed.
Mr. Weed.
I guess so.
As outdoor recreation. Is there anyone opposed to that?
Oh, wait.
You can't vote, you don't get to vote.
No, I'm good.
Frank, we good with that?
Yep.
Perfect.
I would like to add Mr. Brent Hargrave from the Bridge.
Okay. No one's opposed.
Everybody here is going to be good with that one.
Yep. Royal Gorge Bridge.
How about members that have already been working with the tourist council? Can we move on to them next?
Well, how about...
I bet if we go to hotels...
Well, how about the train, since there's one nomination? Don Falsetti.
We want the train on there, right.
Right.
Well, we've got...
But you get a point three, so if you do that column there, you could probably get three from the lodging, you're going to have to kind of start sorting them out.
Like Scott's recommendation, from a standpoint of having some form of continuation from the existing Tourism Council with Steve and Kristin.
I think that's terribly important.
Well, that's why I, well, Kristin, are you, you're currently on the FCTC, so you're the treasurer, yeah. I would certainly nominate Kristin as a, under the tourist industry. And I would do the same thing with Steve Caverman as the chairman of FCTC, and certainly a long background in tourism.
We're not trying to dismantle anything, we're trying to take what we have.
You have three.
These folks have done a lot of work for a long time with minimum dollars to work with, and they have worked miracles with what they have. I think we need to keep them, keep them going with what they need to operate and promote Canyon City.
Is that five members so far? Is that right?
Before you do that, does that give you guys conflict of interest? Are you okay with that? Or because of the school board and FCTC as it stands now?
Hello again. No, I am a champion of tourism, and I'm a champion of education, and...
There's no conflict of interest?
I don't, I don't believe so. I think if the city chooses to move forward with something this year, I'm going to have a very busy fall, is how it will be.
Keeps you out of trouble.
So, we've got three for... So, we've got three from the tourist industry, so now we can move to the lodging.
Who've we got from tourists besides?
You have Mike Bandera, Kristen, and Steve.
Three.
And that's the three.
Oh, okay. I know it, I know it. I've made so much scratches on that one, though, it's, you can hardly read it.
My suggestion for the hotels, kind of sidelines with Dennis's, that, that it would be nice if we had a representation of different, I'm gonna say, sizes of hotels, motels. And if those three that he recommended, Quality Inn, um, Best Western, and the Colorado Inn, unquestionably, I see the Colorado Inn as being representative of the smaller hotels.
Looking at Blaine.
I would concur.
So, you're looking at Blaine, Anise, and Christine.
Christine's...
Stopka.
Stopka. If not, we probably need to go to ballot.
So, I'm, I'm okay with Blaine, he's...
Let's do that one by one.
Yeah, I'm okay with Blaine to start with. Is the Best Western here tonight?
Yeah, that's Anise.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, Quality Inn. Quality Inn, is he here? Hi, Blaine. Yep.
I particularly like having Blaine on here because he's representing a motel that's in the county.
Okay. And, and you're serving for a while, um, you've been on the past commission. Okay, so there's a little bit of continuity there as well. As we move forward, I'd really like to have a discussion, um, with the other people. And I just don't want to, I'm not ready just to appoint the other two that you recommended.
So, let's go to ballot?
Either that, or, you know, um, Ms. Solak was here, she's here tonight, and she, she submitted a letter of, um, of interest. And, um, if we do form this committee and we do move forward, um, it might be good to have that voice, even, even though she said in light of that, there's people that are opposed to the tax, it would be good to have that voice if we're gonna end up forming this and to have a little bit of balance there.
Think she'd be good for that.
Is, is Solak in the wrong column?
Yes.
She should be exed under lodging. Either one, she's qualified for. You're not limited to three lodges either. The minimum of three lodges, there's no maximum. Oh, really? Yes.
I would like to...
Also suggests your two largest lodges as far as income production are the Hampton Inn and the Best Western. To leave them out, I think would be a big mistake.
I would like to go ahead and put John Koshivar.
The Best Western and Hampton Inn are your two largest producers.
How does that, how does that affect the quorum?
And we need input from the people with the small privately owned lodges, too. I mean, every, every, every committee or council we formed, we've, uh, brought people in from all five sides. And usually, when people from all five sides make a decision, it's gonna be the right one.
Cory, how's that gonna affect our quorum if we add more people?
Increase it.
We're not gonna add people.
You're not changing the number.
The number is set by ordinance.
Yeah, that's nine. But you're not limited to appointing just three lodging representatives. They can fall under either category, lodging representatives or tourism.
Well, I, I think three is the right number for lodging. I mean, we don't want this to be a lodging-driven council either.
True, but they are also critical of the fact that there was no Canyon City lodges represented on the last council. And they generate the majority of the income, and you've got two potential hotels coming to the city within city limits.
Yes.
They wanna make sure they're properly represented.
Right.
Two of the largers and two of the smaller.
We already have six.
You already have three in the tourism column. You have Mike Bandera and Kristen and Steve. Unless they don't...
Counsel's decision. Yeah, but if we're gonna change, if we're gonna change, I think we have to change the ordinance, do we not? Cory?
Well, I don't wanna change, you mean, we're not gonna change nine.
You would just change three.
Minimum of nine.
Okay, we need three more.
Okay, who have we got so far?
Well, I, I mean, it's, I'd feel like we, like, totally dropped the ball if, if we ignore the fact that Anise is here and has experience in exactly this area. No, yeah, no, it's, uh, do we agree?
Yeah, I've got him.
Well, you've got him, but Scott doesn't, and, and... So, I mean, okay, let's undo it, and let's just say, we don't, we haven't picked anybody for the lodging industry, and it doesn't sound like we have.
Let's vote on it, get it done.
Let's just do a, do a ballot and vote.
How many do you need, three?
Three.
Three. Is that the pleasure of the council?
I don't see how you can change it. I mean, how can you change it when it says the ordinance?
We're not gonna change it, what we're talking about are the three names.
Oh, yeah, but three numbers.
Three, yeah, one, two, and three. Thank you. So, is that how, is that the pleasure of the council? Do you want to do a, you wanna name three, and, or do you wanna do a ballot? What's your pleasure?
Let's do a ballot, we can't seem to name them, let's move forward, let's get a ballot and get it done.
Voting for three or voting for one?
Like we always do, let's vote for three and see what we come up with.
Vote for three.
Okay.
And the one with the highest will be picked, and then we go to the...
Kathy, do you wanna talk to Mark on the phone?
Mark?
Mark doesn't get a vote, he's not here. You have to be here to vote.
Oh, thank you, Frank.
No, he doesn't.
What?
No.
He can just, he can make it verbal. He'd have to go first.
Yeah, after I get him, Mark, you'd have to vote after.
Okay, we're devolving here, let's go forward.
Okay, just so you understand, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven choices for this.
Okay, what I'm interested in is, I'm not interested in names, I'm sorry. What I'm interested in personally, and I'm, I'm a long ways away, is I'm looking for representative from the brand-name hotels, and I'm looking for, um, somebody from the privately owned motel, or hotels. I mean, that's it. Because I don't have the names in front of me, I don't know the histories, but I just think that anybody that's in the independent industry, um, they have their thoughts, and the people that are on the big franchise industry, they have their thoughts. Um, there needs to be a mix. So, as far as a name, I have nothing in front of me, um, to make an educated decision. Rather, I would rather just say the mix, because if somebody cares enough to be there, uh, either for or against, um, then they're interested in it, and they're gonna do a good job for what we need to do. And I don't know if that's allowed to do, or what.
There's three here representing small, uh, motels.
Absolutely.
There's four.
Which, what's the fourth one?
Number eleven down to fourteen.
Uh, it's, uh, no, it's Colorado, and the Hampton's not small.
No, oh, okay.
So, if we're looking for a small hotel representative...
Independently owned, and then also the franchise, the franchise hotels. Because everybody, between the mix, we're gonna come up with the right things that benefits the most.
Does anybody disagree that we should have a representative from the small motels? Okay, so let's vote on one. You get to pick from, from twelve, thirteen, or eleven, twelve, or thirteen.
One vote for those, eleven, twelve, or thirteen, I'm coming around.
Thank you, ma'am.
Number and name.
Put blood on this ballot.
And your initials.
A line, oh, gosh, let's make this hard.
Maybe I could put Mark's initials.
Okay, we need to, we need to speed this process up, okay?
Got somewhere to be?
No, but we're making hamburger out of a sirloin steak, let's go.
Hey!
Oh, hey, come on, this should've been easier than this.
Have a burger if you're eating steak all the time.
That's right.
Tell me them.
Okay.
And the...
The one that's gonna be appointed is, uh, Ermina Solak, part of you in.
So, we're gonna do two more, right? These will be from large franchises.
So, we'll pick the people with the two highest votes?
Yes, and let's hand out two ballots.
One ballot.
One ballot.
Two names?
Names and your name on them, too.
He's harassing me.
I'm fuddled today. Oh, I've been writing on everything, look at this, scribbles everywhere. Yep.
All right.
Is there a hanging Chad?
No, Chad's not on this ballot.
Okay.
Two top vote-getters were John Koshivar and Anise Malkin.
Yes.
Now, we have our nine, is that complete? Would someone like to read those nine individuals so we can move on?
Sure. Okay, I'm gonna, uh, make the recommendation that we appoint Anise Malkin, Ermina Solak, John Koshivar, Mike Bandera, Kristen Economy, Steve Caverman, uh, Brent Hargrave, Dawn Falsetti, and Dennis Weed to represent, be the representatives on the Royal Guards Regional Tourism Council.
And that was a motion, correct? Okay, go have a second for that motion.
Second.
Are there any discussions under motion? Hearing the scene, now would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
I'm giving an aye, but I want Steve to know, I'm still questionable about you, but I went along with counsel.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote. Did you guys wanna set those terms tonight?
I'll take a one-year.
But Dennis is taking a one-year, he just volunteered.
Well, that could be four years.
Can we, can we get some recommendations from those?
Only if you do a good job, Dennis.
Maybe those guys could send us some information that they would, what, what term they would prefer?
Anise. Okay.
So then I would, uh, recommend that we appoint, uh, Mr. Bandera for a three-year term.
Bandera?
Is that a sentence or a term?
You, you were hit by the tourist train.
And that would make Dennis weed a two.
Dennis, you said you wanted one?
Yeah.
Dennis wants one, that'd be...
Dennis wants one, so that means...
Brent?
For Brent to the two.
Brent would be two.
Then you had, um... Tourist, tourist industry have Mike Bandera and Steve and Kristen. Who would you wanna go, or no, you already have Mike Bandera for a three-year term.
I would rec, so we're gonna do the, finish off the tourism with a two and a one?
Just a second, you have, uh, you have, uh, Dawn Falsetti with a Train. If you're gonna keep those three, you wanna give her the three-year term?
I feel he's gonna be around for three years, and it's gonna be in his best interest for three years.
Okay, let's do Brent for three, Dawn for two, and Dennis you for one. And that takes care of you three.
Is that the one?
Dennis.
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 And then if you go to tourism, you have Mike Bandera, who you've given three. So, now you need Kristen and Steve. You need to do one of those for a two-year, uh, two-year term and one for a one-year term.
Should we do Steve with a two and Kristen with a one?
I would go with Kristen for two and Steve for one, just in that Kristen's almost, Kristen's new and she's a treasurer. She might be able to carry that experience a little further. Uh, no?
You guys have a preference?
Yeah, I...
Terry will be doing the financials for this council.
Include overtime?
No.
No, darn.
Does that make a...
So, either you have a preference?
No, then let's go, I'll go with your recommendation for Steve first, then.
Okay, Steve's going for two and Kristen's going for a one.
Considering her overall ambitious involvement in a year, she may be...
You may be on this council.
She may be the mayor.
That's not a bad idea.
City council, yeah.
How are we doing? We got all nine?
We have three more.
What?
Three more.
Three more, okay, let's do it.
About Blaine, was he on?
No.
Okay.
So, we're doing the three, two, one?
I would recommend Anise for the three.
Jack, I agree.
Me, too.
Then you had Ermina and John.
Ermina, two.
Yep.
And John, one.
Jack.
Okay.
Okay, if we have this, we have, uh, the three-year terms will be Mike Bandera, Brent Hargrave, and Anise Malkin. The three two-year terms, I have Steve Caverman, Dawn Falsetti, and Erma Solak. And leaving the three one-year terms will be Dennis Weed, Kristen Economy, and John Koshivar. Have that in the motions.
Okay, have a motion and a second?
Do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Weed did the motion.
Make a motion.
No, Mr. Weed.
I, I will make the motion to include what Kathy just said for the terms.
Okay.
Second.
Schumacher, second. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, call a roll, please.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, moving right along. We're starting to keep, Terry, we're in 9A, a public, I'm gonna open a public hearing for special use for 230 Yale Place. Everybody open the public hearing, can we report from the city planner, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers.
If I may, I'm going to bow out now, I've got just about one percent of battery.
Bye, Mark, thank you.
Bye, Mark, thank you, enjoy.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Terry. Terry, go ahead, thank you.
Sure. This is a request for a special review use for an accessory dwelling unit at 230 Yale Place in the R1 Low Density Residential District. The property was posted and notice was published, um, at least fifteen days prior to this meeting, as is required. Um, the applicant has made a request, um, to legitimize an accessory dwelling unit in the... to legitimize an accessory dwelling unit in the second story of a detached garage. This is in the, as I said, in the R1 district and can be approved through a special review use. The ADU comprises about 750 square feet of the second story of an existing garage. Surrounding zoning is R1 Low Density Residential and R2 Medium Density Residential. There's existing water service and sanitary sewer. The property meets the minimum lot standards for the R1 district. The applicant's request appears to meet the special review use criteria with respect to lot size, traffic and parking impacts, screening and environmental impacts. There are no issues of concern around that. And the Appendix A at the end of the staff report shows compliance with Chapter 1715, which are the requirements for ADUs. The applicant's request does not meet the occupancy criteria for an ADU in the R1 district. That requires the owner to live on the property for six months out of the year, in R1 only. That provision does not apply in the R2 or R3 district. That's... in addition, the applicant would then, if this is approved, the applicant would then have to get a certificate of compliance for the ADU, which basically means he would be going through a home inspection and then the building department would take a look at the property and make sure that it's... meets all the health and safety standards. The Planning Commission reviewed this at their regular meeting on June 20th. They acknowledged non-compliance for the residency requirement in R1, but nevertheless recommended approval with staff suggested conditions in a three-to-one vote. I'll go through those recommended conditions. And they are that the applicant has to meet all of the requirements of Chapter 1715 for compliance for an existing ADU. We have the staff person has suggested that rather than this be done in 60 days, to actually extend that to 90 days. What we're finding in complying with ADUs, sometimes people have to make repairs to those dwelling units, and we wanna make sure that he is given enough time to do that if he is approved for this. He would have to get all of the required building electrical and plumbing permits. They would have to request an assignment of address, which is how this came to us in the first place, was that they got... they put up an illegal address on the garage, so we want that to be corrected. Has to comply with the requirements of the sand district and the fire district. And again, that he has to get a certificate of compliance for this dwelling unit within 90 days of the approval. This was published and posted on June 30th. There have been no inquiries about this from the public. And there are packet materials for you, as I said, Appendix A, the Planning Commission's advisory report. There's an area zoning map and also an ordinance for you to review. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Thank you, Terry. Are there any comments from the applicant? Is the applicant here?
The Representative Flo Arona is here. Yes.
Flo, would you step to the mic and...
I'm Flo Arona and I...
You could pull that down. Oh, there you go.
Oh, good. I'm Flo Arona, and I'm the property manager for Mr. Connie at that property. And my only thing is, is that when he purchased the property, he assumed that that address of 136 Allison was a good address because it was posted, it was written in the MLS sheet, and it had been used, and since then, it has been used as a... there's a mailbox there, and mail has been received there. And now we're finding out that's not a good address.
Any questions from the council?
I want to say...
I do, for...
Dennis, you go.
Mr. Weed, go ahead.
Okay, not for Flo.
Oh, I have one for Flo.
Okay.
Were you the manager? From the documentation that I read, he's been given two notices for illegal occupancy? Is that correct?
That's what I understand.
Were you the manager during that time?
I don't know. I never saw the notices before. When... what were the dates of the notices? I've had it since night... 14, I believe it was.
I think there are 15 and 16.
No, I've had it longer than that because he's been gone five years, I think. I think he simply didn't do anything if he got notices before. And I say he probably had had some kind of notice because I know he's been in dispute with with the sanitation department about paying the $2,650 prior to getting approval. And I spoke with sanitation and they told me not to pay it until I either got approv... that I got the approval. If I get the approval, we'll willingly pay it. If we don't, we don't have to pay it. But Mr. Blue told me, "Don't pay it because if you pay it ahead of time and you don't get it, you'll have a hell of a time getting your money back."
And they're done that.
Was that leading to a question, Mr. Meisner, or...
What?
Was it leading to a question on the offenses or what?
Well... Can I make a comment? I mean, there just seems to be some history here of this gentleman being non-compliant with the city. And I realize he's trying to correct that now, but...
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do here. Mr. Weed, did you have any questions?
Yeah. This is for Terry. I don't know if you were around. I'm pretty sure I was, though. When these ADUs were established and the logic behind the six months residency was to prevent people from just building a second structure on their home behind their... the principal residence and now having two rental properties on one piece of property. Was that your recollection or...
I was not here in 2011 when this went through. However, I do believe that, from what I understand when we discussed this at Planning Commission, that the R1 district was to still retain as much as possible that single-family home character. And so, to achieve that, there was to be a certain residency requirement. And that's why that was there. And basically, it's exactly what you said. They didn't want to... this to turn into two rentals on one property, which is what this has happened.
I mean, our... I feel badly for Mr. Connie, but our zoning ordinances are very clear. And I think the way to address this is not to ask us to approve this special review use in a clear exception to what we already have as an established zoning regulation. Instead, the proper approach should be to go back, address the ADU regulations with respect to R1 zoning. Now, I guess at this point, and I don't know how this council would feel about that, and it's not a matter for discussion right now, but I would recommend that if that would be Mr. Connie's approach, that we kind of take a hands-off stance on this if it's pursued immediately. Give him an opportunity to...
We've... we're now on the grill, the barbecue grill a number of times because of our previous hands-off approach.
Yeah, true.
And that hasn't felt good for me.
So if they're... he's going to prove that he had some type of occupancy or residency provable for six months, this is acceptable?
I don't know for sure how long he lived there when he owned the property before he went to Hawaii, but I would say he was there longer than six months, but we can find that out. He did live there. He lived in the big house.
But he's gotta be six months every year.
Yeah. The residency requirement is every year.
Right.
Now, I will say this about, if I might.
Absolutely.
The residency requirement, as we get further away from the approval, becomes very difficult to regulate. We don't check up on these every year to make sure that that residency requirement is being met. So it's possible that these types of accessory dwelling unit situations can become that in R1 unbeknownst to us. So even though I do believe that it it certainly had validity when it was put into effect in 2011, it's very difficult to regulate that long-term. So I'll just throw that out there for you.
Mr. Lancaster would have something to add.
What Terry just said. I was part of that when we wrote that. And essentially, it's about property right. So if I buy a property within an R1 zone, I have an expectation of what the neighbor is doing, and that's not a duplex. So essentially, if you allow a two-rental ADU next to me in an R1 zone, that's a duplex next to me. So it's about respecting the rights of the existing owners and what their expectations are in an R1 zone. So when you have an owner on site, the feel is very different. And then the expectation of why the ADU thing was brought to us in the first place was to take care of mom in the garage. That's more accurate to what's, you know, contemplated in the R1 regulations. So that's exactly why it was there. And to change it and make it just like the R2, I think could be a big mistake and kind of be backpedaling for what the intent was.
But we're not trying to change this to R2, and I was on Planning Commission when that occurred, and we did have that discussion. In fact, that we were trying to acknowledge the fact that these were existing. They were there. They were a problem. And I lived down the street from this, and it's very well done. It's not a duplex. They are detached. It's on top of a garage. It's almost innocuous in general.
Sure, but you're increasing density where it's not expected. So the recourse, I believe, for Mr. Connie, in my opinion, would be subdivision or rezone.
But Adam, that's not correct because if he could show that he lived in there six months, you got it. He can do it.
Right, and so when Terry says, "Well, there's no way for us to police it," it's the neighbors that police it. If I had two families living next to me in an R1 zone, I would be coming to City Hall and reporting it.
I think the residency is per year. It says...
Right.
Six months out of the year. It doesn't say it's six months. I mean, and even then, if you're gonna bring the residency issue, I would think it would have to be in a year where we're talking about adding the AUD, which is right now and not 10 years ago, whenever he lived here, whenever that was.
Right.
Well, Adam is correct that neighbors do police their own neighborhoods. So that certainly is something. And actually, this came to us again, although we had talked to Mr. Connie about this in the past. This came to us from the post office because of that address, which was an illegal address, which prompted us to look into it. So we were able to find this again. So I just throw that out there for information.
But to re-clarify, he was... when you received the address change, he already had an occupant that was there with us showing illegal occupancy? Is that correct?
Yes.
And we didn't enforce that?
Well, yes, that's why we informed him that this was illegal and he needed to come in and legalize it. But this was in 17. Earlier in the past, when we discussed this with him in 2014, he indicated that he had no intention of that happening because... but he was out of town and it must have been sublet. And so that was cleared up. He indicated that he was not using that apartment any longer, that it had originally been what he termed a man cave. And it would not be used as an apartment any longer, but it did. Couple years later, it turns up as an apartment again.
Flo.
At the time that that happened, it was not being used as a rental per se. The man and the couple that owned... rented the front house, rented, paid extra, and rented that, too. So for the three years or so they were there, it was not used as an apartment. Only the month before this started did we start having an apartment in there again.
I would have to disagree with that.
Different question?
Yeah, I can... well, I was gonna say that if I rent and I then sublet it, that's easy for me to do as a renter. And so for the last three years, you could have had someone living in there. And it's most likely that you did because it's set up as an apartment. I'm uncomfortable, just for the sake, that we are talking about R1 and we're talking about two rentals on one property and the impact that could have on the neighborhood.
Do they have... does that apartment have a separate water tap?
No.
But that's not necessarily necessary for R2.
Is that not a requirement?
Most multifamilies have only one water tap.
Okay.
ADUs specifically have one water tap.
Okay, and one sewer tap?
The word "tap" I can't speak to.
Okay, yes, it's generally... if you have more than... if you have a multifamily unit on a piece of property, you generally have one water tap and one sewer tap.
Thank you. I'm out of questions.
Mr. Weed, you were... go ahead.
Yeah, well, just to Adam's comment, I think subdivision of this lot would be very difficult, given the proximity of the two buildings. You would have setback issues like you wouldn't believe. So I don't think that's a solution. Rezoning, I think, is potentially a reasonable approach to this since the school right across the street, to the best of my knowledge, is zoned R2. So this... and this particular piece of property is an island unto itself. It is a single piece of property that has streets on all four sides of it. So... And it just sits by itself and it's right across the street from the high school.
So he could come back and then request a... what is it, a zone change?
A zone change to R2.
Yes, he could request a zone change.
R2?
Yes.
I, truthfully, think is the only real option. There's no guarantee of success, but I think it's the only real option.
Yeah, I walk by it quite a bit. It's very well done. It's on top of a brick garage. It's a nice unit.
Oh, yeah, I looked at buying it a year ago.
Yeah? Why didn't? No. I've been in it, too. It's very well done. So and it is on an island by itself. That probably would be the answer. They should try for maybe a rezoning.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, but was this originally not two parcels in this island? And this got built on the line of one of them and they're all considered one now?
Well, the garage is... straddles one of the lot lines. It has like a couple of... like, it's on two different lots. And so it does... the garage does straddle one of the lot lines, so it has to be considered one parcel at this point.
Okay, any comments from the audience at this time? We're gonna move on. Any further questions or comments from council?
We're just gonna pass?
No, I'm gonna close... no. I'm gonna close the public hearing, then.
Okay.
And then we're going to go have the... 9B is ordinance number 19 series 2007. This is the first reading. I will need three counselors to introduce.
I'm gonna introduce it and then vote against it.
Well, I need... it won't even come up if I don't get three people to introduce. I need three to introduce. Who would like to introduce?
Frank and Kathy and Dennis.
Okay, they're introduced. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number 19 series of 2017, an ordinance amending Section 17.24.050 of the municipal code to add there to a new subsection identifying a certain land use permitted only by a special review, an accessory dwelling unit located at 230 Yale Place.
Okay, could I have a motion and a second from council? Mr. Weed?
Make motion to approve ordinance, bill for ordinance number 19, series of 2017 on first reading.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kathy. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Could we call the roll, please?
Councilmember Weed?
No.
Councilmember Schumacher?
No.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember Hockes?
No.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
No.
Approved by, denied by unanimous vote.
Okay. So, we're on the 10:00 AM. It's a public hearing. This is amendment for title 17.30. This is regarding signage or signs. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Could I have a report from the city planner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. This is an amendment to chapter 1730, the sign code. It's a repeal and reenactment of the sign code with respect to First Amendment requirements. Public notice was published as required by law. The Planning Commission considered this application at their regular meeting on June 20th. There was some discussion about political signs and restrictions that are noted in the draft regulations. The commission recommended approval of the ordinance with a modification to allow unlimited political signage without a permit in a four-to-zero vote. I would refer you to the city attorney's memo to council dated March 20th. And also, after just a few brief comments, I'll pass this on to Cory, and if he might want to ask specific questions of him. In 2015, the Supreme Court case Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, the court found that a municipal government could not, quote, "restrict expression" "because of its message, its ideas, its subject matter, or its content." And the vehicle of expression in this case is a sign, and the message, idea, or subject matter is what simply is written on the sign. In short, if you have to read the sign to know how it may be regulated, then that regulation is considered content-based and is not allowed. So, we may regulate as with respect to time, place, manner, which includes the placement materials of signs. And all the signs have to remain content-neutral. That's what this revision does. And I can give you, I'll just go through and give you a quick example. If you turn to the red line that's in your packet, it's behind the memo. I'll give you a quick sample. You go to page six of the red line. I hope I explained this correctly, Cory. If I don't, please. He will. I know. He'll jump in. So, 1730040 in the middle, which says, "Signs for which no permit is required." A, professional signs and nameplates. That was stricken, because you would have to read the sign to know that it was a professional name or a nameplate, a professional name. C was stricken, "Signs advertising a property for sale or rent." You'd have to read that to know that the property was for sale or rent. So, those items were taken out and are replaced by time, place, manner. So, a real estate sign, maybe a certain size. A person can have one in their yard for a specific period of time, perhaps. I'm not sure that that's actually in here. But you're allowed a certain number of signs on a residential property over a period of time. And those could be any type of sign, perhaps. But we would not call them real estate signs any longer. So, that gives you an example of how this was changed. And that concludes my remarks.
Hey, what's the difference between the red and the blue?
Oh, that was the person making
There's no significance.
No, no significance.
I did confirm that after we talked, so I sent an email and confirmed that.
The difference of colors, or what?
Time and different authors in some cases, but always from our office.
Okay. Got it. Any questions from council at all?
Go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah, no, I was going to ask, just because I have a particular interest in the answer to this question. Once, and I've looked and looked, and I can't find it in here. But once upon a time, I know for certain that as part of the sign code, there was a regulation stipulating that if the two faces of a double-sided sign were within a certain distance of each other, like 12 inches or 18 inches, it was considered a single sign, as opposed to two signs. I know for a fact that was in there, and I can't find it. Because I've built that sign.
17 inches?
I haven't seen that in this code.
I know.
I thought I seen something about sign thickness.
I can't, yeah, I can't find it in here. And, you know, I mean, that was, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to say, I think that we should take this to committee and kind of maybe go through this, maybe a little more line-by-line or in detail, so that we can see the real ramifications of what we're doing. You know, it's like the same page that Terry was talking about, page six. And the red lines down in the bottom, and we've crossed out G as yard sale signs, no permit required. I mean, I don't know if we really intend to enforce this or not, but I think almost everybody knows that when there's a yard sale, right now, you're limited to two yard sales. If you go back and refer to 1720220, and reading there, you're limited to two yard sale signs. Well, people put up yard sale signs all over the place. And, you know, I don't know if it's our, I don't know if we're going to make an ordinance and then not enforce it, or if we're going to just pretend yard sale signs don't exist, or
Let me try to answer the question from a strictly legal perspective that I will be the first to admit is not always reality, okay? The United States Supreme Court has told us that basically, we can't look at what's on the sign. And so, the easiest example I would suggest to you is a real estate sign, because there's also a Colorado Supreme, or a United States Supreme Court case from many, many years ago that says you can't prohibit a real estate sign. How do you reconcile that? You say, "Everybody gets a sign." Some may have a real estate sign, some may have a yard sale sign, some may have a home occupation sign. But the idea is you have a specific limitation on the number of sides, the material of signs, the size of signs. You may have different limitations on the number of signs during a particular season. So, for example, some communities have what are known as election-season signs. What does that mean? That means during election season, you get a whole bunch of signs. Do they have to be candidates? No, they could be whatever sign you want. But you can't read what's on the sign. If you start reading what's on the sign, that's when you violate this United States Supreme Court
What a great country we live in.
So, that's the way this is supposed to work. This is intended to be an interim fix, because the city sign code is roughly 25 years old and needs a lot of work.
Right.
But this is to do sort of the bare minimum to bring it into compliance to say, "Okay, we may need to work on this, but we know we can't read the sign." That's the purpose. And if you need to study it further, that's, certainly, I've got no objection. But I wanted you to understand where we're coming from, which is somewhat counterintuitive, because when you look at a sign, you read it. But the government can't.
You know, I get the concept, although it defies logic, at least the way my mind works.
We could arrange for a general government discussion on August the 9th.
Yeah, you know, and just, I'll give you another example. It's like, well, on the next page, and this is maybe kind of nitpicking, but so the biggest flag you can have is four feet by six feet, okay? Where'd that come from? It's a
That is something that has nothing to do with content. So, if there is issue related to size of flags, that is not intended to be captured by this change, other than to say, "There's a staff recommendation somewhere for that size."
So, but, I mean, if I said, "You can have any size American flag you want," but you can't say that, because essentially, recognizing it as an American flag is reading it, and so, you can't do that. Okay. All right.
One of the other things
I would like to, if we're going to rehash this elsewhere, why aren't we doing it tonight?
Yeah, let's take it out.
I mean, we're in a public hearing. I can close the public hearing, and we can decide as a council to take it to a general government meeting. I would prefer to do that rather than to redo this over and over again.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, and I thought we did this when we approved the agenda and consent agenda?
Okay, I'm going to go ahead
Okay.
And close the public hearing, and then the consent of council, that we set this aside to a general government meeting in August. Is that correct? Okay.
August the 9th, if we can go ahead and let's table the ordinance.
Okay.
Do I need to make a motion?
Well, do you want to make a motion? I closed the public hearing. There's nothing to motion, then. Is there?
You already moved it from the agenda, right?
Yeah, I thought we'd already moved But you want to continue the discussion?
We will continue at the next general government meeting, okay?
Save my papers and save it to me.
All right. 11A, a public hearing amending title 17. We're going to open the public hearing at this time. Could I have a report from the city planner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a public hearing to make various amendments to the zoning code with relations to junkyard, shipping containers, screening of commercial and industrial activities, and maintenance of display lots. The Planning Commission considered this on June 20th. They made some distinctions between junkyard, salvage yard. I'll get back into that in a minute. They discussed these revisions at a work session in March, and were in general agreement with all of these. And these revisions were also presented to the council at their Vision Committee meeting on April 19th. One of the things that has become very important in the last several months is the aesthetics of our community. And as our code enforcement has become a little bit more heightened, we have found that some of our regulations are, they don't comport with maintaining and improving the aesthetics of our community. One of those is making a distinction in our definition of what a junkyard is and where it can be allowed. One of them has to do with language that we think might become more specific with respect to screening commercial and industrial outdoor storage areas along our corridors. One of them also has to do with intermodal shipping containers used as accessory structures. And the last one has to do with maintaining display lots. So, I'm going to go through those very quickly, each one very quickly, so that we don't spend too much time on either one. The staff report actually shows you in red line what the recommended changes are by staff. And then, the Planning Commission has improved on that a little bit, and that's where, and those changes that they have made have been put into the ordinance. So, for a junkyard, if you go to page two of the staff report, a junkyard means an area of land within any zone district other than industrial with or without buildings. Continue. Our code enforcement officers were having conversations with folks out there in the community who believed that a junkyard would be available to them in an industrial district, when in reality, if we go back to the allowed uses in the zoning code, a junkyard is not allowed in any district. The closest that we have in industrial is a salvage yard, which could be somewhat similar. But that requires a special review use approval, and we do not have that. We don't have any approved salvage yards that I'm aware of. So, we wanted to remove any kind of confusion with the folks out there who have junkyards in the industrial district, because we were trying to clean a lot of them up and have people put their storage of their, whatever they are, their inoperable vehicles or whatever, either behind some sort of screening, or in a garage, or something like that. So, that was the first one. The second one has to do with intermodal shipping containers. People are using them as accessory structures, and we have considered them perhaps not to be appropriate for residential use. So, this amendment defines what they are, and then prohibits them in residential areas or residential districts, and also on residential properties that may be in other districts. The Planning Commission added that they should not be in the central business district at all and used as an accessory structure. So, that's what that particular amendment is. Now, I will say that our research has found that some jurisdictions do allow shipping containers to be used as accessory structures for indefinite periods of time if they're painted or structurally modified, so that they appear similar or compatible to onsite structures. The Planning Commission, we discussed that, the Planning Commission rejected that and decided that their recommendation would be not to allow them at all.
Why did, I, that was one of the things I was specifically going to ask about. And I didn't know that the Planning Commission specifically rejected that, but why? I mean, because, I mean, you can make a shipping container look like a storage shed. You put siding on it. You put a roof on it, and it's indistinguishable.
They weren't exactly specific about that, but they said, and if there was anything that they may have waffled a bit on, it was that aspect. So, they just decided to go with what the staff recommendation was, but decided not to, not to carry it forward, so that they could be allowed. If you wish to make that change, we certainly can't do that. If you, but we would have to come up with some form of standards that would make them
A metal in that district. Not that I'm suggesting this be an accepted method of construction, but I have seen in magazines, shipping containers that were assembled and homes built out of them, that from the exterior, well, and the interior, are gorgeous, absolutely gorgeous. And they're constructed out of a collection of shipping containers.
And this discussion did come up during the Planning Commission, because people have seen that. So, regarding the total ban of that, is there a way that we can do it as a special use permit or under special review?
We could also just have supplementary regulations that said that if you wanted to do that, you could. It wouldn't necessarily be a permit, but it would be an approval by staff. We would review it and say, you know, you'll have to have maybe perhaps three different, use two of the three or four different standards, for instance. You could paint. You could have a roof structure. You could have something like that. If you wanted to do that, we would have to come back to you.
As a property owner in the commercial business district, I'm concerned with the total ban of it. However, I believe that if someone was to come forward with a good idea for, you know, for the central business district, I would expect, you know, to see those plans in advance and to make sure that it's something that we review, not just someone putting it there.
And we could do that. We would probably want to remove that piece and have the staff work on it and bring it back to you.
This is only in reference to residential, is it not?
Well, the ban actually is for residential and also the central business district. And that was specifically added by the
I like the idea of just removing it, having staff work on wording to address,
Design considerations?
Appropriate use of these containers, because like I said, it's
Is, yeah.
It's a very affordable alternative to building something, and you can make it look
And I can think of a couple of pieces of vacant land that are on Main Street, and people have actually proposed those as a form of development, and I wouldn't want to stymie that particular idea.
Okay, and this, and this is actually just for accessory use, so we can come up and make sure that we address all of these, both as principal and accessory, if you wish to have some sort of a design standard or something like that for them.
I would like to see that, yes.
Okay. The, are we, do you have any more questions?
I still disagree with the verbiage, that the verbiage is referencing residential, even though it's in an industrial. See that verbiage that says?
It is, it is resi...
It's referencing residential, it's not referencing commercial.
That's true, it is, it's, it's referencing residential accessory plus the central business district.
And so we want to remove the central business district from that particular stipulation and keep it as residential?
Oh, I want to take it out of residential as well.
We allow it.
Completely remove it.
We're trying...
Make a fine garage, a one-car garage.
Make, you know, get rid of the, the container looking thing, but, but if you want to take a container and make it look acceptable, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, we can, we'll come back with that, we'll remove it from, from this particular amendment, but we can do that.
And again, regarding those, now we're going to be talking about pods for a second. Sixty day for pods, who came up with that number? That's a really long time to have a pod out there.
That was just based on some of our research. If you would like, we can certainly make that less.
Two months to have a pod in someone's front yard, I think is long, I don't know. I just think.
Sometimes I've seen them for six months.
A, a container that's intended for moving.
Yeah, they pick it up and load it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because then it does become...
How long are we living in?
It says sixty days.
Sixty days.
I would think if you're moving, you could do it in thirty.
Okay, would you like me to make that change to thirty?
Yes.
I mean...
Yep.
Okay, on the screening regulation, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay, on the screening regulations, what we have in place right now is commercial exterior activities have to be screened, or they, they should be screened from residential property. That's the only screening regulation that we have. We would really like to beef that up, and have it be commercial and industrial activities, outdoor activities, and that they are screened from, my recommendation at the time was all adjacent corridors, all adjacent roadways. The planning commission reworked that, and they would like it only to be the corridors that are our primary tourist and visitor areas, which would be Highway 50, Highway 115, and the Arkansas River Corridor. So, the idea is to screen either through fencing, vegetation, birmingham, that kind of thing, any outdoor, commercial, or industrial activity from those three corridors. Now, enforcing that, I think we're, we're not at the point where it would be appropriate to enforce that unless it came to us by complaint, and the reason for that is, we haven't even started to work on the Highway 50 corridor. So we don't know how that is going to look, or it be landscaped, and it may be such that those people who are adjacent to it won't have to do anything at all, that it may be as time progresses, and all of our landscaping and trails along the, along the roadway and everything, take care of that for those folks. I don't know, we don't know how that's going to come out in the next several years, or the way, you know, Fremont Drive is going to go away, and, and we're going to have access straight up to Highway 50. So let me just say and reiterate that we're not going to go out, when this goes into effect, if it does, and start telling people that they have to screen right away, because, not unless it comes by complaint. If somebody dumps something out behind their building, and it's really awful, and it, it creates an eyesore, yes, we'll go and talk to them, but I just want to make sure that you're aware that we're trying to set something up for the future, and that Highway 50 especially may end up, in its design, over time, may take care of all of that screening.
Yeah, but my, and I think what you said will probably address this, but my concern is got to do with the, the river corridor, and specifically the Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan, where we're talking about specifically trying to encourage some types of commercial activity along the river corridor, and I don't see wanting to screen that. I mean, if it's the appropriate type of activity, like restaurants, or bistrels, or, you know, that kind, we don't want that screened from the river.
Absolutely.
That's part of the whole ambiance.
Right, so this is, let me read something to you. Commercial and industrial exterior activities, including service areas and outdoor storage yards, we definitely do not want to screen something that's retail, or a restaurant, or a deck, or anything like that, where there's, where we're actually trying to put a front door onto the river. That, that's not, what we want to screen are those places where people are storing inoperable cars, where they're storing extra steel, and wood, and junk.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So that, that's the point of that.
But, but we have that verbiage in here, that the specific verbiage that Dennis talked about, where it says, outdoor, commercial, or industrial activities located adjacent to designated open space. So we get into that area in terms of, I realize the first part, you talk about storage yards, but then you go on to say industrial, commercial activities, which that encompasses about everything.
Well, it does, I can see where certainly isn't the intent, can probably... Say that differently.
There you go.
You may have to give me a few days.
And then the other issue is, you talked about a natural, a barrier that, or a barrier that may be created because of the corridor. I would like to see that verbiage also, that, that, for example, by regulation, if there's a natural barrier that is created with the Highway 50 corridor, those businesses technically would still have to create their own screening to the highway. My point is, is if there's a barrier that already exists, then the screening, they wouldn't have to do the screening.
That's correct.
I would like to see something that addresses that. And just a stipulation, that if there's already an existing barrier, then the screening's not required, but you, you could have an example of a, for example, going through Colorado Springs with that cement barrier, where the people on the other side still got to have a screen, by regulation, and if you're going to enforce one, you technically need to enforce all, unless there's some type of a existing barrier that accomplishes the screening, then I could support this, I think.
Duly noted, I will make those revisions. And is there anything else on screening? And finally, we have display lots. Our code enforcement officer has gone out and misidentified a junkyard that was actually a display lot, and we couldn't tell the difference. And what we, what we ended up trying to do was add something to this regulation that basically said, all display lots shall be maintained free of weeds, debris, junk, and trash. So we want to be able to tell the difference when we drive by, at least our code enforcement officer, and so...
Do we have a definition of junk? I'm serious, I mean, if we don't have a definition of junk...
It does beg the question, it does beg the question, if one man's trash is another man's trash.
That's absolutely, that's correct.
Right, so what do we, how do we do that?
So if you're, and the other thing was that we wanted to make sure that, you know, if, if it's for sale, we need to know that it's for sale, and it needs to be...
Sales tax and all that, right.
Right, and it needs to be neat, so, you know, that...
Okay.
There's a lot of people out there that buy junk.
It's more aesthetically pleasing, so...
Let me object something, I don't think we're ready for this. We got too many things going on, and you need to take another look at it. We already are into this almost half an hour. I'm just afraid I'm, I'd like to close the public hearing and move on, and we can have those discussions, and modify, amend it, or change it, or we're going to be talking about this for another hour, but I don't think we're ready to introduce this.
Terry, do you want to go ahead and make those amendments, and then bring it back, and just not introduce it until you, you make those, some of those changes?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, let's continue to...
Thank you, Terry, for identifying those weaknesses in the current...
Yeah, I, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and have that take the pressure off Terry and your staff to take some time and relook at it, okay? Thank you.
Will do.
Let's move on to number 12, ordinance number 22, series 2017, it's an ordinance amending section 13.04.120 of your municipal code. This is a first reading, could have three to introduce this, Mr. Weed, Mr. Ekstrom, and Mr. Hockes. Could you read by title, please?
For ordinance number 22, series of 2017, and ordinance amending section 13.04.120 of the Canyon City Municipal Code concerning the provision of water services to properties outside the city boundaries.
Could I have a report from the city engineer? Oh, there you are, Mr. Lancaster, that's quick, come on. Come right up. Could you have a report there?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, yes, so this amendment is brought to you for, because historically, the city had applied exactions, or improvements for water service agreements that were outside the city limits. You may recall, let's see, March 8th, May 3rd, June 7th, in the March 22nd committee meetings, we discussed exactions in general about, in, with regards to development, and one of those items was water service contracts for those services outside the city limits. And so while the other exaction changes are coming through the planning commission first, and then back to you, this is one that is addressed within the water code, and so it's ready to go now, and basically what we're going to do is eliminate those exactions for all water service contracts, except for those that are identified within the priority annexation areas. So with that, oh, with the exception of water system improvements, so obviously, if someone, if the water line's not there, and we have to install a water line to serve them, then of course they'll have to pay for that, but all the other type of stuff that we used to talk about, future improvements agreements for curb and gutter sidewalk, pro fair wits, that sort of stuff, we'll no longer apply those exactions.
The, the part about upsizing water mains, all that, that will stay there.
That all remains, yes. Anything that's water related to, you know, for system delivery, remains, but stuff that's unrelated to water, street improvements, that sort of stuff, no more, except for within those priority annexation areas.
And we will still maintain them there, I'm pretty sure I read the annexation agreement, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Any further questions of council, with the engineer? Could I have a motion in a second from council this time?
Before we do that, I want to correct the typo, first sentence, I think it should say, whereas the city desires to clarify certain conditions, that may be imposed, instead of state may be imposed.
Sorry?
Be that, yeah, so before we proceed, if we just make that change.
I would ring call for a second reading.
I make a motion?
Could you make a motion, Mr. Weed?
I would love to, keep this show moving. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, make the motion to approve ordinance number 22, series of 2017, on first reading.
Second.
Check his second, he looked like he was first. Any discussion on that motion? And none, would you call the roll, please?
Member Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Number 13, I assume this is why Mr. Patel is diligently sitting here, lining things, things out. Resolution number 19 of 2017, it's amending the city's personal management manual, could we have a report from the city administrator, please?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we're going to focus primarily on two issues, the PTO, paid time off, and the floating holidays. We've had focus groups with our employees, plus individual meetings with every department to review this, to make sure there's concurrence, that this is in the best interest of both the city and themselves. Traditionally, cities break compensated absences into two buckets, vacation and sick leave, and they're counted for and costed out separately. The private sector lumps that together, and allows individual employees simply to use their discretion as to how they want to use their time. They don't have to send in a sick note, if they're sick, they just use paid time off. This is becoming more popular in the government sector, for example, West Pueblo, Grand Junction, State of Colorado are now practitioners of PTO, and the principal reason is it reduces financial liability. Currently, the city has $713,000 in compensated absence liability, of which 69% or almost a half million is unfunded. So if everyone was to leave tomorrow, we'd have a bill for over half a million dollars that we don't have the money for. So we looked at this, and how can we reduce this overall unfunded liability? PTO is the best response. It would save us on average, on an annual basis, about $236,000 a year. For example, in the last five years, the city has paid out for vacation, but primarily sick leave accruals to retiring employees, almost $834,000, and that only affects a couple dozen employees. That would have been the equivalent of an 8% across-the-board salary increase for every employee in this city, which, believe me, they would prefer. We've had individuals, and they're not gaming system, this is what was in place, they've earned it, one individual got a $44,000 check. By comparison, coming from California, I saw checks of a quarter million plus. I don't think that was the intent of sick leave, that wasn't the prudent use of taxpayers' money, so it's kind of been used for purposes unintended, and very expensive. So with PTO, we can reduce that liability, give discretion to our employees, and most of our employees use their time astutely, they'll actually end up having more time off, and not game the system. So for example, currently, the maximum accrual you can have for both vacation and sick leave combined is 744 hours or 93 days you can carry. Under this PTO system, that will be shrunk by 49%, the maximum accrual will be 384 hours. So you can see, that's all, we've reduced our exposures tremendously by that action, and the employees recognize it, for the vast majority of employees, they will benefit by this. Now, we have the current obligation of buying back time, and we need to do that to reduce our liability, because dollars and time today are less than they are 10 or 15 years from now. So we want to get these hours off the book. That conversion will cost us approximately $357,000, that's a big expense initially, however, again, we're saving on average over $230,000 a year thereafter. So the, the long run benefit is significant, reducing liability, but we've got to reduce hours now.
I have a question, so we didn't budget for this, so where are we going to find $350,000?
Well, we have operating reserves that you can utilize, yeah.
So just pull the reserves.
Yeah, and effectively, you know, within 18 months, you'll have repaged yourself back, and then you're earning real savings from that point on, that's the benefit. On the issue of floating holidays, floating holidays and PTO don't work, so we need to take our existing two floating holidays and designate them, so we've proposed, and we've shared this with the employees, and they're in general consensus, President's Day would now be a fixed holiday for the city employees, and Christmas Eve. Right now, we provide half a day at Christmas Eve, we propose shifting that half-day to New Year's Eve. So two floating holidays will be designated for President's Day and Christmas Eve, and the half-day they're currently earning off, that will be shifted to New Year's Eve. So you either can rest up for your parties, or watch more bowl games, but at the end, that's... either can rest up for your parties or watch more bowl games. Um, but at the end, I think everyone wins. The city wins, taxpayers wins because we reduce this liability. We pay less when people leave the city. Employees win because they literally actually have more discretion about their time. And they'll be able to use more time off. We want people to leave, uh, and take a break and get re-energized. And, uh, at the same time, we're saving money.
Sure, we don't have to call that holiday eve.
Which, oh, oh. We'll call it what it is, Christmas Eve.
So, this, and we've talked about this, is, um, I'm, I'm unfamiliar with this. But this is a situation where people accumulate and cannot overaccumulate. They, they would have to go ahead and actually take time off.
Yes.
Which I think is a good idea. I suggested that to my wife many times. But, okay, so...
Yes.
All right.
The only correction in this, um, memorandum is on the last page of the manual, it should be, "We'll also permit people to cash out certain out, number of hours, most likely forty, uh, at the end of each year." But that should read, "In the month of December, the first paycheck in December, not July." Because that's a popular option for employees as far as accumulating some cash for the holidays. Uh, of the cities I've worked for, it's very popular. And again, it's advantageous for the city and the taxpayer to get people to either use their time or sell their time on a regular basis rather than letting it accumulate because it, it gains in value, time value, money. It costs us a lot more if they have these hours in ten or fifteen years from now, a lot more. When they may be earning twelve dollars an hour today, they could be earning twenty-five or thirty hours in fifteen, twenty years. And that's what you gotta pay it out at. Not at the time which it was earned, but when they leave. So, we wanna get as many of these hours off our books on an annual basis.
So, this is essentially a use it or lose it policy. But do we, are we, is the intention to inform employees come December first?
Oh, yes.
If you don't cash out thirty hours, you're gonna lose them. Yeah.
Yeah, if they've hit their cap.
Yeah.
Uh, we have employees, and Harry can testify to this, we have employees right now that are, even with a much larger accrual opportunities of up to seven hundred and forty-four hours, that just lose that time. They don't use it. That's not healthy for people not to take time off. There's, there's a reason for vacation time. It's not just to play. It's to re-energize people, get them off the job. And same with sick leave. We don't want people coming in to work sick. If they're sick, they need to take that time off and recover. Uh, under PTO, they're more likely to do that because they don't need a doctor's note to come in. They can use their discretion. And we hope that they do.
Jimmy, are you in that system, aren't you?
Negative.
Oh, I thought the state was.
The state just took it away and you just lost it.
They have a certain number of hours that you can accrue up to, but there's vacation time and sick time currently, within Department of Corrections anyways.
Okay.
Now, what, what the state used to do before is, like, when I first went on, they didn't have no limit on what you could accrue on that sick leave. The only thing that they had was like, when you retired, you didn't get paid the money at your salary when you retired. You got paid the amount of money when you first started so that it didn't cost the state a lot of money. And that's, that's how they did theirs until they went to the restricted, uh, vacation and sick leave.
Okay.
Question. Do we, do we have, is Veterans Day a holiday?
I don't think it is. In November, that's November. Why, why is that? If you have an extra holiday, I would recommend you not do Christmas and you do Veterans Day. That would be my recommendation.
Oh, oh, I, I would.
Or, I would suggest, I understand, maybe we shift it from President's Day to Veterans Day. I think the employees would accept that. Christmas Eve getting off is very popular. But to tell you the truth, we're not getting any production.
You're talking about all-day Christmas now, not just Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve. Christmas Eve.
All Christmas Day.
All, all day.
Most of the employees are gonna take off.
Take it off any, take it off, yeah. So, there's version, so we may as well just take advantage of that. So, if you, we have no issues. If you wanna ship President's Day to Veterans Day, I don't think we have an issue with that.
I think you'll have a lot less complaints because we have complaints on the veterans because we have so many in town.
So, you can make that modification. We'd, coupled with the modification of, the payouts will be in December, the first paycheck versus July.
Okay.
Page five, it was just incorrect.
Any further questions, the council?
How many employees do you have that are not comfortable with this? Do you have an idea?
I would say that ninety-nine, five percent employees, and we've talked virtually, everyone is supportive of this. Um, and we've made some adjustments, you know? We've got feedback on both focus groups and individual departments. We made changes. We increased the total maximum accrual from three oh four to three eighty-four. Uh, that the officers who have to work the vacations and the, some of the folks at the water operations plant, they'll be earning double time during those vacation times. So, that solved their problem. Uh, not a lot of employees will get that, but for those who do have to work those holidays, they appreciated that. Those are the major changes. The other issue I should bring up is that we're also switching short-term disability from forty-five days when it kicks in to fourteen. So, you really only have to carry about eighty hours to cover yourself in case you get hit by a bus or have an illness before short-term disability kicks in and provides you the necessary compensation to recover. That was a very important safety net, uh, that we've moved up. So, that was very important.
That's a huge change.
Yeah, yeah. So, now, they now know they don't have to carry these enormous sick leave bags because it's not really necessary.
Okay.
And that's gonna help us financially in the long run.
Any questions? Harry, any?
Sorry.
Yes, Mr. Ekstrom?
Um, in, in moving these, Christmas Eve into an actual day, that's what I heard, right? You had two floating days and you moved. How does that affect, um, when Christmas Eve fell, fell on the weekends before? So...
It's covered in here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
If it's on.
And then, before we change to Veterans Day, was there any consensus amongst the staff as to which one they would prefer to have?
Well, we discussed President's Day, but I think they would be pretty, uh, ambivalent about switching it to Veterans Day. They definitely, I think Kathy, right, they definitely liked the idea of the fixed holidays on Christmas Eve. Because a lot of employees take that day off anyway, so they appreciated that.
Is, I've, I've always been surprised to see President's Day not a holiday. And then oftentimes, we have meetings on that night. Um, Veterans Day generally does not fall on a Monday. It's always on a different.
I believe it's a Tuesday, isn't it?
It's, yeah, it's a random day during the middle of the week.
It's November eleventh.
It's always, it's always November eleventh.
Yeah.
So, regarding that, President's Day is a very popular holiday. And to have the city open when a lot of people are already vacate, taking, you know, three-day weekends might be a concern.
I, I think the employees just, they were appreciative that they didn't lose anything, that wherever they got, wherever it swaps out, they didn't lose anything.
And I'm gonna go back to my original suggestion. When I look at the whole thing, I think when you look at the industry, the number of businesses that give you a full day for Christmas Day is minimal, in my opinion. I don't have any research to back that up. But then, conversely, if you look at the number of businesses that honor Veterans Day, I, I think that's a higher percentage. And, and my suggestion would be to not do the Christmas Eve a full day, but to give, um, to make that a Veterans Day holiday, but whatever the flavor of counsel is.
Yeah, the employees would be upset if you took, did not make Christmas Eve a full day. But we're ambivalent as far as whether you wanna pick and assign Veterans Day or President's Day. We, we could accept either one.
Your Veterans Day is on Saturday.
Well, they'll get, they'll get it off. They'll get that Friday.
Okay.
Still get paid for it. So, whatever your, your pleasure is as far as either Veterans Day or President's Day, we're, we're flexible.
What's the consensus, council? President's Day or Veterans Day? I'm for Veterans Day.
I'm for Veterans Day.
I'm for Veterans Day.
Yeah, as long as we don't mess with Christmas.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just.
We'll never miss a council meeting because of Veterans Day being a holiday.
That's right. So, when you make your motion, uh, needs to amend it to include, to swap that out.
Was there any other amendments then, besides Veterans Day?
Just to change the cash out to this first payroll in December versus July.
Okay. Okay, then let's have a motion from council in a second. Would someone like to tackle that?
Sure.
The Schumacher, what?
Well, no, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Mr. Weed.
Okay.
Members of council, I make a, uh, motion to approve resolution number nineteen, series of twenty-seven, with the changes we discussed specifically, moving the payout date to, uh, December first of December or somewhere around there.
First paycheck.
First pay period in December. And to, uh, redesignate the President's Day holiday to Veterans Day. I think that's all.
Second.
Second, Miss Schumacher, second? Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Is there any other business at this time? Hearing none, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Bang your dabble.